Welcome to the 1,970th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. Today is June 5th of 2023. We will begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Scott Barr. Please rise.
To the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. As I stated, this is the 1,970th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting and meeting minutes will be approved at the next regular meeting on June 26th of 2023. Ms. Nash, will you please take the attendance?
Councilmember Barr?
Here.
Councilmember Donavick?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Vice President Toy?
Here.
President Jolly?
Present. We have all of our members here tonight.
You forgot me.
Councilmember McCullough?
Present.
Okay. Well, I said everybody was here tonight. So I think no matter what you said, you're still here, right? All right. So the meeting minutes that we're looking at tonight are from May 22nd of 2023. Can I have a motion for those minutes?
So move.
Motion by McCullough, support by Morgan. Are there any additions or comments on the meeting minutes of May 22nd from the council? I see none from the audience. I see none. Ms. Nash, take the vote on the minutes, please.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Present.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The minutes are approved. At this time, the council has set aside up to 30 minutes for audience communication for the audience to address us on any topics that are not on the agenda this evening with three minutes available to each audience member. Is there any audience comment? Is there audience comments in the back there? Okay. We have somebody sitting in the back here. Mr. Smith, please identify yourself.
Yes, my name is Darrell Smith and I live at 14006 Brookfield. And I'm glad to be here tonight and I want to thank you again for this platform and the microphone.
It's wonderful. Now, as I've said in previous meetings, I want to continue to plead for a reconsideration of the path on the Noble Library. I feel like as I look at information that I've had to access, it seems weak at best and scattered or even worse, some misinformation out there about how many decades we've worried about Noble Library. Now, people talking about decades, that's a long time. That's at least two decades if you put an S on the word. So that's a long time. And whoever said decades, that's simply not true. Okay? So secondly, we should have an ad hoc committee to review just the status of the building and the possible uses of that building and the property. So I want to say that again. Now, what I'd like to talk about in addition to Noble Library is access for disabled persons such as myself. Now, I'm hoping that within the next year or maybe less, I'll get out of this wheelchair. But there are some people that are in a wheelchair and they will not get out of it. So we need to consider access to this building. And so one of the issues that is on my mind is if there was something, if my wife was sick, I couldn't come to this meeting because I couldn't get in the building. I couldn't get up the ramp. Now, this is wonderful once I get here. But now I've noticed that there's an automobile entrance and exit to the underground area. I don't know if that's underground parking or what it is, but I don't know. I assume it's going to be a few years before a new city hall is built. Now, a few years is a lifetime for some people. They're not going to be here by the time a new city hall is built. Now, I think we should take a look at can an elevator from the parking garage down below to the first floor be installed so that handicapped people could be dropped off down below and ride an elevator anywhere in the building? It wouldn't have to go all the way up. It just would have to go from the parking garage to the first floor and then they could get in the other elevator to go elsewhere. Now, there's some other options. That's not the only option. There's some options that have some attendance available to push somebody on a wheelchair that's by themselves up and what have you. There's another option of having Zoom meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you very much.
That's your three minutes. Good evening, ma'am. Your name and address, please.
My name is Margaret Durrell and I live at 31545 Pembroke Street in Livonia. Recently, I had the privilege of attending the Memorial Day Ceremony. And also yesterday, my husband Tom and I were vendors at the Greenmead Flea Market. And I just want to say thank you for the joint effort by Ted, the Director of Parks and Rec, the Parks and Rec Committee, and all the employees of Livonia Parks and Rec. They did an outstanding job of making everything seamless and I just want to recognize them. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else for audience communication? Seeing none, we'll go to the council. No, it's okay. Good evening, ma'am. Your name and address, please.
Vicki Johnson, 32209 Jameson Court, mid-Livonia. So the reason I'm here today is because multiple, multiple neighbors of ours are concerned, very concerned over my backyard, straight behind me, my backyard neighbor, 14847 Ingram is a rental. And the people who own it do not come around unless they want to collect their fees. The grass is about up to my hip. Multiple, multiple calls resulted in this violation sticker that was put on their front door on the 17th, I believe, of May. They did not, they had the whole weekend to clean up that property and they didn't. And then the whole following week led up to Memorial Day and multiple, multiple calls, even to the mayor's office resulted in some company with people who did not speak English where they're whacking the grass and all the grass from the ground up was lying across the lawn. Rats are evident running through that lawn. There's this big, huge area in the backyard with wild growing trees. That's where the rats are. There's possums back there looking for the rats. We'd appreciate it if some, this could be addressed with the ordinance department. I know there's only, I called you, only have four ordinance employees for the lawns. Multiple, multiple calls by all of the neighbors surrounding, across the street, on both sides and down the street and us and next door to me, too. It feels like in other cities, they get a $500 fine. And it also has at, in Lathir Village, it says that this duty may not be delegated, but if the owner shall put others in possession or occupancy of the land, it becomes a duty of those people to cooperate and assist in fulfilling the duties. But the renters do not cut the grass. They don't shovel the snow. So how these owners were contacted, I'd like to know that. Also, our ordinance is nine inches, Lathir Village is seven. A normal lawn is cut to three inches. So you're going three times the length of grass and weeds.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
We'll ask Mr. Fisher, you're the representative from the administration here tonight. I ask you just to take note of this and pass along to the ordinance department to make sure that they are on top of this particular issue. Thank you, sir. Is there any other audience communication tonight? I see none. We'll go to the council. I believe Ms. McIntyre, you have a list of retirees, correct?
I do. These are May 2023 retirees from the city of Livonia. Stan Townsend, a custodial supervisor, 21 years and 11 months. Kristen Crawford, a senior police sergeant, 25 years. And Stephen Patch, a senior police lieutenant, 25 years. We thank all of these outstanding employees for just great service to the city over very long careers. A lot of things have happened in the city during those years and no matter what department you're in, you've been affected and had to step up, certainly not anywhere more true than in custodial and public safety. So we wish them, all three of these folks, a great, long, healthy, and happy retirement. And again, we thank them for their decades of dedicated service. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from the council? Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President. On Saturday, May 27th, the city of Livonia held its annual Memorial Day Ceremony at Veteran Park, which is right there at the corner of Five Mile and Farmington. It must have been maybe 100 people or so, give or take, were there. And Councilman Jolly was present. He was able to give remarks on behalf of the city. There was an amazing speaker that served in the United States military for a long time. The city also awarded the Veteran of the Year to a resident. So just a really great event to support our veterans and the people that have paid the ultimate sacrifice. I know Councilman Morgan served in the military as well as myself, so it's nice to see the city continue to take such an active role in supporting our veterans and the men and women that have passed. I implore you to take some time to go visit Veterans Park. There is a wall there with multiple names etched in the stone of Livonia residents that have unfortunately passed away while serving our nation. And I think it was really great that the city of Livonia did that some years ago. Also, I want to touch on an item. I'm not sure procedurally how to do this. I don't necessarily want to do a motion, Mr. President, but it'd be nice if maybe the law department can take it back to the administration to investigate who is responsible to maintain the weeds and grass along I-96 freeway. Myself and a few other councilmembers have received complaints from residents and about the excessive growth of grass and weeds. I mean, we all drive next to I-96 freeway often and you see them at the overpasses and whatnot. And the resident just got done talking about a home behind her that has excessive growth of grass and weeds. So I'm not sure if that has to be a formal motion or if that's just going to be something that the law department can talk to the administration and figure out who is responsible to maintain that if we can either reach out to the county or the state. I'm not sure if that's MDOT's responsibility, the county, to get over there because there's just grass that looks really bad if you drive along I-96. That's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Zelensik? You might be the most knowledgeable person in regards to that, among other things. But would that be the state or would that be Wayne County?
Michigan Department of Transportation, but sometimes they may sub it out to Wayne County. But as you know, they're limited on their cuttings. I think typically they do the freeway cleanup and then they do the cuttings. But I would check with our maintenance folks at MDOT and see what can be done. I know the site distance is very difficult as you come off the freeway. It makes it very difficult for motorists to come off and make sure they, you know, can see their cars coming and going. So we can definitely reach out to MDOT and see what can be done on the cuttings and see if there's going to be some relief there.
When you say "we," do you mean yourself?
Myself.
And we always appreciate that service.
And my assistant, whatever. So we have good contacts over there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Barr?
Just wanted to acknowledge the concerns of the resident speaking about the rental home. If my memory serves me correctly, and I may be wrong, but if my memory serves me correctly, this is the same home that we had some pretty extensive discussions about a few years ago with some issues with. And I see some nodding heads, so I think I might be right about that. So I, just hearing a repeat offender, if you will, I'm personally interested in this. And I understand, it sounds like you called all the right people, but I'm going to look into this because I'm just, I'm personally interested in what's going on there. And I'm just going to ask, I won't ask you to come back up to the podium, but if you think of it, just shoot me an email at sbar@livonia.gov and it's on the city website just so I know how to contact you because I'd like to follow up and understand what's going on there. So thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else from the council? Ms. McIntyre?
I'm going to go. I have several items. Just be quick.
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. I know we had, I try to pick out always something fun that we have going on in the city. Last week, I know we had the Greenmead Flea Market and I know you brought it up. If I seen you and I offended you by any means, I tried to get the best deals possible. We did pretty well. But it was booming. It was a great day. A lot of people and the weather was great. So coming up this week at Greenmead is the Motor City Iris Fest. That's going to start on Friday, goes through Sunday. It's a great time. Information's online. And also, if you're a car enthusiast, on Sunday at Wilson Barn, they're going to be having their annual car show. Goes from, I believe, 9:00 AM till 4:00 PM and that's at Wilson Barn, West Chicago and Middlebelt. That's always a fun time as well. So hopefully we can order up some good weather and have another great weekend in Livonia. Thanks, Council President.
Thank you, sir. Ms. McIntyre?
Several items. Thank you very much, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to wish my mom a belated happy birthday. She celebrated her birthday yesterday. That's why I couldn't be at the Greenmead Flea Show. That wouldn't have gone over real well with my mom. But she and my dad raised their family in Livonia and that's where I first got to know and loved the city. And she's been a terrific mother to me for the last 60 years. So thanks, Mom, and happy birthday. Second, I'd like to congratulate Livonia Save Our Youth Coalition on a fantastic 5K Saturday morning. A lot of our colleagues were there and a lot of support from the city. I think Mr. Zelensik put together some folks to run and it was just a great event for a great organization. I know the LPD and the city were both sponsors. And none of those things happen without support of the LPD, our reserve officers. And as always, a big thank you to our CERT, our Community Emergency Response Team. All volunteer and as they are at every big event, outstanding on the corners. It doesn't matter how hot or how cold it is, making sure that everybody stays safe. But it was a great event for a great organization. Wanted to mention the growing situation with store parking lots becoming de facto used car lots during the weekend. And it happens quite a bit at the Stands Market at Five and Farmington. And I know that we are very limited on our ordinance officers to go out and address these things, especially on the weekends. I'd like to ask for a resolution to put this into the law and public safety committee. I would like to understand if there's an opportunity for our reserve officers to have some assignments regarding, I don't know if we can, we can't ticket. I'm pretty sure, having looked into this before, the ordinance does not allow us to ticket those vehicles immediately, but if we could put notices on them, it's one of those quality of life things. It's certainly not on a par with public safety or timely trash pickup. But those are things that just kind of take a little bit off a community when you drive by on a weekend and all of our, or not all of, but a lot of our commercial lots look like de facto used car lots. So I'd like a resolution, I'm offering a resolution to put that item into the Safety and Environment Committee.
Is there support for that?
I'll support.
Okay. We have a motion by McIntyre, support by McCullough. Any other comments from the council? Audience comments on that motion? Ms. Nash, take the vote, please.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The motion passes. That'll be in the Law and Education Committee. Please proceed.
Thank you. And one final item. I was not able to attend the meeting from two weeks ago. As President Jolly mentioned, and thank you for making mention of that, the city's, the council's representative to the pension board and I was at the twice annual conference, which is a working conference and get a lot of good information that's useful to me in my role on the pension board. But at that meeting, and I did have an opportunity to watch the meeting, Mr.
Rushlow?
Thank you. I was remembering how you called him, Mr. Roroff, and I was almost doing the same. Mr. Rushlow was asked about, when he was up here talking about, another project was asked about the repairs on Edgewood. And one of the things that's caused delays, and a lot of the delays were understandable, COVID and labor shortages, but DTE has had a significant role in that. We were supposed to get our transformer, I understand, in February. And then after the ice storm, DTE said we need every single transformer to get people's power up and running and we lost our transformer. Now, we have our transformer, but DTE's not been out to, I guess it's to connect the power to the transformers. Is that correct, Mr. Zelensik? Is that what needs to happen?
I have to defer to Jacob or Don. They've been handling that project, but I assume it's getting connections to that facility.
Thank you. But Mr. Rushlow was asked about what the communication has been from the city with DTE because this is now, if I understand it correctly, our critical path item that is, there's one of the key things keeping this from getting completed. And the answer was that a letter was sent from the mayor's office to DTE with strong language. I don't think letters with strong language are appropriate response for the completion of a project like this. So I would like to ask the administration, I know, Mr. Fisher, that you're the de facto representative tonight, but Mr. Bernier told us that Mr. Varga watches these meetings every week. So I'm formally asking the administration if they could share with council what the exact communications have been with DTE and maybe give us a copy of that letter. It seems that we are now past the point of letter with strong language and I would hope that the mayor's office is being aggressive in contacting DTE leadership to find out what the delays are and when we can get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donavick?
Thanks, Mr. President. Nobody addressed it, so I'll just take a quick second to, a resident in the back talked, brought up a point specifically about the elevator. And just since everyone's here, I figured I'd touch on it. There is an elevator and it does go to the basement and it's been here as long as I think the city hall is. So there is a base elevator, if anyone needs to get to the basement, to first, second, third, fourth, or fifth floor. I just want to touch on that real quick. I think there was some confusion about not having an elevator. Did I understand?
Yeah, actually, I was going to address that, too. Just very quickly here, you'll notice, thank you for that. We're not going to start a conversation because this is not part of audience communication, but there is a notice on each agenda for each of our public meetings in compliance with Title II of the Americans with Disability Act, where if anybody does need assistance in getting to the meetings or getting into the facility or speaking at one of the facilities, they can contact the city clerk who would assist in those arrangements. So I just want to make sure that that's well-known and that that's put out there. And I hate to necessarily steal Ms. McIntyre's thunder, but today's actually my mom's 70th birthday as well. And I think she's a pretty special mom, so maybe we'll have a mom off or something like that. So I actually left my son's baseball game where my mom's sitting there celebrating her birthday. So happy birthday, Mom, happy 70th. And we also have another birthday in our house. My daughter Lexi's turning 12 this week as well. So we're excited for her and those pre-teen years are great. Totally special thing. So with that being said, we have some great department heads and some people who might even be better than the department heads here. We have our assistant city attorney, Mr. Fisher, our very own Harvard law-educated city attorney. So we might be in better hands tonight. Don't tell Mr. Bernier I said that, though. We have Ms. Nash, our city clerk, Linda Shield, our city treasurer. We have Sarah Kaskowitz from the council office, Todd Zelensik, our city engineer, and Jacob Uhazy, our deputy economic development director. We'll just say deputy at this point, all right? So we want to thank them for being here and assisting us tonight as well. We will now move on to our agenda for the evening. First off, we have a communication from the Department of Finance dated May 5th of 2023 forwarding various financial statements of the city of Livonia for the month ending in March 31 of 2023. We then go to our consent agenda tonight. That's items 1 through 10. Those items were studied previously at our study meeting on May 22nd and found to require no additional studies, so they will be voted on as a single item. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So move for approval.
Motion to approve by Barr, support from Morgan. Is there any audience comments on the consent agenda, items 1 through 10? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The consent agenda, 1 through 10, is approved. Item 11 on the agenda is a report out from the Law and Education Committee meeting of May 17th of 2023. That meeting was chaired by Councilman Morgan. We'll go to Councilman Morgan for his report out. You have the floor, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. The Law and Education Committee was held on Wednesday, May 17th of this year. We had, present was myself, Councilman McCullough. Then we had Councilmember McIntyre, Councilmember Rob Donavick, city clerk Susan Nash, city treasurer Linda Shield, inspector, inspection director Jerome Hannah, and Leo Neville, the city attorney, were present. We first discussed CR 177-05. The subject matter was to amend the Livonia Code of Ordinance and add a dog leash law to ensure that the dogs are under control with their owners to prevent any tragedies. This meeting started at 7:00 PM and then ended around 8:00. That specific ordinance or recommendation, correction on that recommendation for that committee, was to take no further action and to remove it from the committee at this time.
Is there a motion to support that?
I'll support.
Any additional comment from the council, Ms. McIntyre?
We're removing it because we did put a leash ordinance on the books, which is why this is coming out of committee. Correct, Mr. Morgan?
That's correct, yes.
It's housecleaning.
I think so. I just, I think the ordinance that we put together, is that on public land and parkland? We might, I don't want to throw a wrench into this. I think that one specifically dealt with parkland, if that's...
You are correct, but we cannot enforce leash laws on private property, which, well, I think we decided that with, there's, you get into, Mr. Fisher, am I correct? You get into questionable legal ground when you start trying to enforce leash laws on private property. Is that correct?
Well, I can see several problems with that. Oh, I can see several problems with that, one being those people who will claim that it's their property.
Right.
Another being, are we going to send someone to enforce this all over the city or are we just going to pick up, you know? I mean, so anyway, I think it's probably best left alone.
And I think, and thank you for the clarification, President Jolly. And I mean that sincerely. We had a lot of discussion about where that, where a leash law could, where you could enforce an ordinance and we ended up with public property. And so we did do what we could with that ordinance.
Okay. I was just trying to point out.
No, thank you for that clarification.
She's been sitting in there since 2005 also.
Yeah.
So we have a motion from Morgan, support from McCullough on that one. If there's no other comment from the council, is there any?
Chair, just purely for the public's education, because actually I just had a conversation with a group of people just within the last week on this and so it's timely. As I recall, it's not just public parks, public property included sidewalks because that's city right of way. So I'm just saying this for the community's education. If you have, if you're walking a dog on public property which includes sidewalks, it has to be on a leash based on the ordinance that we passed a couple of years ago. So thanks.
Thank you for that additional clarification. I should have said that when I said public property.
Okay. If there's nothing else from the council, we'll go to the audience. Your name and address, sir?
Christopher Martin, and once again, the great state of Michigan. I do have that ordinance before I read it, that is currently on the books, that I tried years ago to have a leash law put on. And at that particular time, I didn't get much support whatsoever. And this was immediately following a Livonia resident, not in the city, but a Livonia resident north of here jogging, being attacked by two large dogs and mauled to death. Okay? That actually took place. And so I tried to get something put on the books at that time. Didn't take place. And later on, because he's more persistent than I am, I guess, Steve Johnson, got the thing changed to a certain degree. But I'll read it, what's currently on the books here, okay?
here, okay? Pets are required to be on a leash securely held by a person of appropriate age and discretion with the ability to control the animal on streets, sidewalks, parks, public places, or on private property of another, not on their own, of another, unless expressly, uh, permission be granted by the owner of that property. So that's what's currently on there. Uh, always been in favor of a leash law because, um, it prevents tragedies. Uh, one thing I did notice to get back to, uh, the clock's not working, but let me know when...
I'm keeping the time on my watch.
Okay, excellent. Is, uh, at Greenmead, they finally put up signs when you entered the place, as far as at Flea Market, uh, Sunday, uh, no dogs permitted. That was long overdue. I recommended that years ago. It was implemented, but it was never enforced. When you walk, uh, over at, uh, Greenmead there, we really needed to have, uh, not that anyone's going to misbehave, but we really need to have reserve police officers over there, more so than just, uh, officers standing out, uh, Newburgh directing traffic. So, uh, I am in favor of that, uh, leash law. There might be a slight change, but to, uh, prevent, uh, you know, another, uh, serious injury or possibly a death.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So if there's no further audience comment on that, that motion to remove the subject matter of dog leash law from the Law and Education Committee, Ms. Nash, take that vote, please.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The item is removed. We'll go back to Mr. Morgan.
The second thing that was discussed, uh, in the, the Law Committee was, uh, CR 294 dash 14, the subject of regulation of veterinary hospitals for its report and recommendations. The, uh, the statement was made, uh, by myself, that this, uh, the, the subject matter hasn't been discussed since 2014, and my recommendation as a housecleaning item is to remove it from, um, the committee at this time with no further action.
I'll support.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Toy?
If I recall correctly, this subject matter was put into that committee because, um, we had different veterinarians in, in around Livonia, um, with overnight stays that were causing some disruption in some areas, and we wanted to define what hospital meant. And I'd have to go back through the pages on, um, that meeting to see exactly what was said, but I think that was the intent with, uh, that manner being into that committee. I don't have a problem discharging it. I just wanted to make others aware of what I remember at least. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Is there any audience comment on the motion to remove the regulation of veterinary hospitals from committee? Seeing none, Ms. Nash, take the vote.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The matter is removed. Mr. Morgan, please continue.
Yeah, the next item that was in the Law and Education Committee is CR 317 dash 15, the subject of signed permit application petition 2015 dash 08 dash SN dash 04, submitted by Hereon Sign Company on behalf of Livonia Family YMCA, requesting, uh, approval for a replacement ground sign with variable electronic message board at 14255 Stark Road. It was, uh, recommended by me and the committee that, uh, that be removed, uh, and no further action taken at this time, considering the YMCA no longer exists here.
I'll support.
Any comment from the council? Any comment from the audience? Ms. Na, Nash, take the vote on that as well, please.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The matter is also removed. Uh, we'll move on to Mr. Morgan's last item.
Yes, uh, also, uh, CR 110 dash 23, the subject matter of demolition of blighted residential and commercial property was discussed. And, uh, a brief discussion, um, this was put into committee by, uh, Councilman Donovan regarding blighted buildings, um, since there was some recent demolition in Westland regarding, uh, blighted properties. And, um, the ultimate resolution or the, uh, recommendation was to inspect or, uh, to have inspection in the Law Department discuss and prepare an ordinance to better handle vacant structures similar to the, uh, City of Westland. Um, also, the Inspection Department to consider, uh, a request to increase staffing to allow more investigations of blighted property. Um, I will turn this over to Councilman Donovan, so we can...
Do you need a motion first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you need a motion?
A, a motion for what?
We're gonna, I'm, I'm sorry. My mistake. We, um, we want to just keep this in committee at this time, and we're, we're waiting for recommendations from the, um, uh, Inspection Department and the Law Department.
Then no action is required at this time.
Okay.
We'll just let it remain in, in committee. Do you have a motion, Mr. Donovan?
Uh, no, I don't, Mr. President. I just want to touch on this real quick.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do appreciate Councilman Scott Morgan for placing this item in the committee and scheduling it pretty quickly. And thanks to Inspection Department Head Jerome Hannah for being there and, and giving us an in-depth discussion and an explanation about what our current ordinance allows his department to do to tackle the issue of commercial blighted buildings in our city. And, uh, we can all drive around, and we can see some of the vacant buildings in our community that have been left that way for, for decades. So I do appreciate, uh, everybody's work on this, and I appreciate the Law Department and Building Department coming together and figuring out what we can do to tackle this issue or to incentivize these old blighted vacant buildings to, uh, to be addressed. So I thank, uh, everyone for their support. I'm looking forward to what the Law Department and, uh, Inspection Building Department can come up with. Thanks, Mr. President.
Mr. Barr?
I know we don't have a motion on the table. In the attorney notes, there, there was a proposed resolution, and may, if you guys are aware of that and don't want to offer it, that's fine. But I, there was a proposed resolution to ask the Law Department to prepare that ordinance. I didn't know if that's what you guys wanted, but...
I, I guess, Mr. President, I'd like to make that recommendation. Uh, I, it's my understanding that they were, they intend to do that, but to make sure we get it, we, we can get it done, uh, I'd like to offer, uh, a motion for the Law and Inspection Department to look into our current ordinances and see what they can do to update them or amend them so that we can have a new ordinance.
Support. A motion by Donovan, support by Vice President Toy. Is there any comment from the audience in regards to that motion? I see none. Ms. Nash, take the vote, please.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. And that item will remain in committee as well. We'll move on to unfinished business tonight. Uh, the first item is a block party coming to us from Ray Franges to be held on Saturday, August 19th, from 3:00 to 10:00 PM on Brentwood Street between Meadowlark and Jaclyn Streets with a rain date of Sunday, August 20th of 2023.
I'll, I'll offer an approving for discussion.
Support.
Motion by McCullough, support by Vice President Toy. Is Ray Franges here tonight? Mr. Franges? Um, so typically with block parties and people seeking approvals of the city, we normally ask them to accompany, uh, well, to bring their plans forward at a meeting, uh, so that they can inform the council and the community of what their intentions are. Mr. McCullough, uh, they do not seem to be here at this point in time.
Then I'm going to rescind my motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barr?
I, I would offer the motion regardless, if there's support.
Support.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Totally respect our expectation that people come here. I'm disappointed Mr. Franges isn't here, but, um, this block party has been going on annually for at least 20 years. I know that because it was in my old neighborhood, and that's when we bought our house there. Um, they're here every year before us. It's a tradition there. There's never been an issue. I have really zero concern in approving this tonight.
Okay. Any audience comments on item number 12? I see none. Ms. Nash, take the vote, please.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
No.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Item number 12 is approved. Uh, for item number 13, I will be recusing myself from that vote and handing the gavel to Ms. Toy, our vice president, uh, to avoid the appearance of impropriety. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, this is item 13. Council, it's a request to amend previously established commercial rehab district number four. Um, let's see, on behalf of the Schoolcraft Lodge, Inc., for a three-year extension for the redevelopment of property located at 31501 Schoolcraft Road in the northeast quarter of Section 27. Do we have a motion?
Madam President.
Go right ahead. Councilwoman McIntyre, and then Councilmen Barr.
I was going to offer a motion.
Support.
And supported, moved by McIntyre, supported by Barr. Councilwoman McIntyre.
Um, I am, and again, I watched the, the, uh, the meeting from two weeks ago. I'm very happy to see this project moving forward. That, uh, that lot has been a disgrace. It was a restaurant. It was a beauty school. And now it's, uh, just a horrible lot that is like a mosquito breeding ground for most of the year, because it's just, it collects standing water. And so I'm, uh, very happy that we are going to be able to extend the commercial rehabilitation certificate for three years to, um, to ensure that this deal can get done. So that's why I offered it, and, uh, excited to see it moving forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Certainly. Anyone else from the council? Anyone from the audience wishing to speak to item 13? Hearing and seeing no one, would the clerk please take the roll or the vote?
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
No.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
No. Motion passes. Um, I'm going to return the gavel to the president.
Thank you, Vice President Toy. We will move on to item number 14. That is a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinance as amended from the Department of Law to Section 040 of Title 13, Chapter 8, having to do with water service rates and revenues to provide for changes in water service consumption rates to become effective with the first billing on or after July 1st of 2023. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll offer a first read.
Okay, we have a first read on item number 14. Is there any comments from the council or the audience on that? Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please.
Thank you. Christopher Martin, uh, Michigan. Just a question on this. When I was attending a, the last meeting from, uh, two weeks ago, there was a, a woman over there that stood at that podium, never gave her name. She works for the city. Uh, I'm assuming she's in the water department, but never gave her title, never gave her name. Sometimes, if they're here a lot, the, um, employees, the, uh, they'll be their name and their title underneath when they're speaking. That didn't take place. So who was that, just for the record?
Connie Campula.
I, I think...
Excuse me one second. Ms. McIntyre, go ahead.
Connie, um, Campula, our head accountant.
Head accountant, correct.
Okay. Cause I had heard, I thought somebody used the name Dana. Okay, but once again, when a person whose employee doesn't state their name, their title, and where they work, it's, uh...
Noted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That, that's actually our fault.
Sure. Yeah, it is. Yeah, it is. Yeah. Um, if there's no other audience comment on that, that will be voted on after a second read in the future. Item 15 is a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinance as amended to Section 050 of Chapter 13, of Title 13, Chapter 8, again, having to do with water service rates and revenues to provide for changes in water consumption rates to become effective with the first billing on or after July 1st of 2023.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barr?
I'll offer first read.
Thank you. Any other comment from the council? Any comment from the audience? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 16. Proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinance as amended from the Department of Law to Section 050 of Title 13, Chapter 28, industrial waste surcharge to provide for changes in industrial waste surcharge rate to become effective on or, excuse me, on or after the July 1st, 2023 billing date.
Mr. President.
Mr. Donovan?
Offer first read.
Thank you. Any comment from the council or the audience on 16? Seeing none, we'll move on to 17. A proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinance as amended from the Department of Law to Section 120 of Title 13, Chapter 20, having to do with the Livonia Sewage Disposal System to provide for changes to the sewer disposal and maintenance rates to become, uh, effective on or after July 1st of 2023. Counsel? Mr. Morgan?
Oh, I'll be happy to offer, uh, first read.
Thank you. Any comments on item 18 from the audience? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 19. That is, well, I, let me repeat just real quick. Items 14 through 18 will be voted on after they receive a second reading, most likely at the next city council meeting, which will take place on June 26th of 2023. Item 19 is an award of contract from the Department of Public Works for labor, materials, and equipment to complete the 2023 roof replacement projects.
Mr. President, I think you skipped number 18.
Or number 17.
Number 17?
You did skip 18.
Okay.
So I gotta do 17?
You did.
17, I think was...
17's good. I think we missed 18.
17, I think you did, and we still need to do 18.
Yeah.
You said 18, but I think you did 17.
Did look a lot alike.
Okay, I apologize. Okay. Item 18, proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinance as amended from the Department of Law, Section 130 of Title 13, Chapter 20, having to do with the Livonia Sewage Disposal System to provide for changes to the special rates for designated uses to become effective with the first billing on or after July 1st of 2023.
Mr. President.
Mr. Barr?
I'll offer first read.
Thank you, sir. Any audience comments on item number 18 the second time or the first time?
[laughing]
All right. Item 19 is an award of contract from DPW for labor, materials, and equipment to complete the 2023 roof replacement projects in an amount not to exceed $681,853 from budgeted funds.
Council President?
Mr. Morgan? Or, Mr. McCullough, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Um, I put this on regular just to have further discussion with Mr. Rushlow. Last meeting, we were discussing, uh, the, the replacement...
I thought you were going to make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Approval.
Support.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. McCullough.
Um, so we've got a bunch of roofs that we have to replace. Um, and the one in question was the senior center. Um, if you have followed our Vision 21 master plan, the senior center may or may not be in existence in the future. Um, so we wanted to make sure we were stewards of, and fiscally responsible. And after discussions, there's actually been about four inches of standing water in some locations of the current senior center, which is not good. And even with, uh, even if that building stays around for three to five years, uh, that's more important to make sure we're not holding water on a roof. So that was my hesitation on putting on the regular, and after getting the answers, I am more than happy to, uh, support.
Okay. Ms. McIntyre?
I'm glad that, uh, again, I watched the meeting and, uh, when, uh, Councilman McCullough made the comments about spending the $50,000 or so on the senior roof, I understood and appreciate taxpayer money as someone who spends a lot of time at the senior center. Um, the standing water on the roof oftentimes becomes, drips through the ceiling, and there are buckets all over. And I heard the discussion about you can only patch things so many times. And so I'm, uh, happy that, uh, you're supporting that and want to move ahead.
Any other comment from the council? Any audience comments on 19? Seeing none, Ms. Nash, take the vote, please.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. 19 is approved. New business. Item number 20 is a block party and street barricade from Lauren Fagel to be held on Sunday, June 25th of 2023 from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM along the Five Mile Service Road from 36996 to 36916, Five Mile Road, with no rain date requested. Can I have a motion, counsel?
Mr. President.
Mr. Donovan?
I'll offer an approving.
Support.
Okay. Ms. Fagel, come out up to the podium, please. Do you mind telling... Do you mind telling us what this event is celebrating and what your plans are?
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm Lauren Fagel. And so it's 36916, and we're on the Five Mile Service Drive right there kind of between CVS and Levan. And so it's my husband's first year as head coach at Churchill High School, in addition to coaching many other things. I'm also missing a baseball game tonight for my son. And so I thought it would be a great opportunity to get the coaching staff and their families together because we can also see the fireworks. So it's June 25, the night of the Spree fireworks. So you can see them perfectly from our home right over St. Mary's. So it was a perfect opportunity for us to bring our families together along with, we have about nine houses in our little strip on the service drive, together to barricade that off, get everybody together, meet other families. We've only been there about five years or so. I've already notified the other families because I also planned a garage sale in July, so I'll be sending a permit for that soon, too. And so they are already aware of it and looking forward to hopefully, if everybody passes it. And it's twofold also because that night, drivers will use it as a turnaround and some crazy erratic driving going down our service drive. So I was hoping that I could use it as a fun time for our families, but also to help prevent it from people driving down our little Boulevard Street, too. Because it's only narrow enough really for one car, and then it just kind of turns into chaos, so.
Sounds great. The only problem is, I think technically you're in Stevenson territory, though, right?
I am.
The Spartans.
We have our flag hanging proudly on the north side, yeah. I went to Churchill, he went to Stevenson.
So is it like one of those house divided flags?
No, we're good, we're good. He's good.
Mr. Donavick?
Mr. President, before Councilwoman, Vice President Toy says, "Go Bentley Bulldogs", I want to say, "Go Chargers" as a Churchill grad myself. And just a little note, I think your husband started coaching the football team after I went to Churchill. And I always played like second or third string, so he doesn't know who I am. But I heard he's a really great coach, and I'm a little upset because after I left, Churchill started getting really cool equipment.
Yeah.
And I'm a little upset to this day, 10 years later, 12 years later.
He also got good after you left.
That is true, so congratulations.
Thanks. Come to some games, support us.
Maybe you guys could do like tryouts in the front lawn during the-
Oh, yeah, thanks.
But they were well hydrated when you were there, right?
Yes, they were.
Good luck, great idea. Appreciate it. We're going to vote on it now, we're all set.
Great, I'll probably be back next year, then. All right, thank you.
Sounds good. If there's no audience comment, Ms. Nash, will you take the vote?
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye, the matter is approved.
I just, I know you're going to go back to audience communication, but I just wanted to wrap up the comments.
Thank you. Mr. Martin correctly pointed out that Connie Campula, we did not indicate, and I noticed that when I, again, when I watched the meeting. And I will say that the Council President, Council President Jolly does an excellent job at having people, whether we see them or not, whether we see them all the time or not, asking them, you know, to introduce themselves. Sometimes at a study meeting, if it's a department head who's there a lot, we don't. But also when you're running the meeting and trying to keep track of everything, sometimes it slips by you. And that is, it's not Connie's fault. She's up there, she's presenting, you're thinking about what you're going to say. So that was on, that was on the council, and then it's, you know, we try, if we catch it, to remind the president. So sometimes that slips by us, but it wasn't her fault. And always, great job running the meetings, as always, Mr. Chair.
I'll take it on the chin. I appreciate the comments, but just because we did this already, I'm going to go to Ms. Toy first, and then we'll go to audience communication. Ms. Toy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to remind people, and I know your kids are getting anxious. Spree will start on the 20th of June and run till the 25th with the conclusion, as she just had said, with the fireworks. And it should be an exciting year. A lot of planning goes into this, a lot of volunteers, and we're still in need of volunteers. So if you know someone that would like to, you know, perhaps volunteer for the beer booth, or driving a shuttle, or just hanging out and running to get ice or whatever, all those little tasks are very much needed. And many of our Spree workers, as many of the council people know, because they've been involved as well, they take their vacations and, you know, run it for those weeks, or that week, I should say. So, you know, Livonia loves a good party, and it always is a good party. Our fireworks, I think, in many ways can outdo some of the Detroit fireworks and others around us. They're just fabulous. They do a great job. And I didn't want to get into birthdays, but having no children, but working very hard with women that have been trafficked. My dear friend that, we've been friends for many years now, had twins.